Brian.
Excellent. I'd like to open the March 25th special things committee meeting. Let's look at the leadings.
Budge leaders.
Certified by the United States of America. To the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, and that is the rule of justice.
Okay, I'm gonna start with introduction. You started that as a favor?
Dan Carter, first selectman, ex officio.
Ken Carson, selectman.
Care for big alternate.
Mike Isoski.
Paul Shandley, chairman.
Diane Ryan.
I was being the alternate.
That's the Magda planning director.
Bob Leggett, Fisher.
And staff of this this evening.
Dave McCollum, land use coordinator.
Amanda Martinez, recording secretary.
And Beth had already introduced herself. Before we open that, the continued public hearing, Mr. Carter, you have something for us?
Thank you for the recognition, Mr. Chair. I just wanted to kind of give a quick explanation, ex officio. It's come up recently, and I sent a message to staff and the chair that we discovered in state statute that not only am I an ex officio member of the board, which I have been by virtue of being the first selectman, but also Eric Svensson is actually an ex officio member of the planning and zoning commission. So you will see him start to come in when he wants, but I wanted to explain what ex officio really is. So an ex officio member, think of it as having all the privileges, but none of the responsibility in a weird sort of way. An ex officio member is a full member of the board, has the authority to speak, is exactly like an elected official on the board. That's a board real exactly there. He is an officer of the town. Can't vote. That's the big one. And he doesn't count for quorum. No matter how many people are here, the ex officio member does not count for quorum. So as I mentioned, it's been statute since the beginning of the commission was created that the first selectman and, in this case, the town engineer or the commissioner of public works for the town is an ex officio member by law. So it's not something we're putting in the charter. I happen to be an ex officio member just because I'm the first selectman. I'm an ex officio member of the law boards and commissions. So I want to make sure we understand that because, believe it or not, it's not been widely understood in town. For instance, when I went to the Board of Education as an ex officio member for the first time, I was shut down and told not to speak at a meeting. So I kind of had to go back and say, hey, guys, here's how it works. In cases where the Board of Ed is supposed to assign an ex officio member to Parks and Recreation Commission, they have a position. So the Board of Ed has a position for Parks, Recreation, and Insurance, and it's a shout. So they're supposed to appoint somebody every year. So anyway, I just wanted to kind of put that out there because he hasn't, what he was presenting before, and he gave his presentation, really it was because he was a resident and public works director. I mean, he's a trained planner. He's an engineer. He's an urban planner. He does what Hardisty and Hanover and those other folks did prior to coming here. That's what he did. He did consultants on urban planning. He's a great asset to the board, to be honest, and he has every bit of ability to give information as a member of the town, as a member of the board. That's why he's there. That link to the public works and public planning zoning needs to be there. So I just want to make sure that you guys understood, because it wasn't really mentioned before. I had sent out that quick email. It's just super important that you understand, and that's where it came from. It's been in state statute forever. I can get you information on it, you know, why it's there. But I believe it. It's a good thing because it connects planning and zoning and public works.
No, he seems like a very knowledgeable guy. The couple of interactions we've had, and there'll be another tool to put in our tool bag.
I'll tell him you called him a tool.
Favorite band, so.
Just, Trevor, thank you. I just want to make sure I, glad we know. He is going to come once in a while. He doesn't count for forum. If you want him to be here, let him know, but otherwise he'll just come through once in a while.
Excellent.
Could you, could you just get one clarification regards to his role on the board?
Yeah.
And that is dealing with this commission, when they seat somebody after the close of a public hearing, they have to go through, they have to be very meticulous as to who's seated and therefore who can speak. Could you get clarification that he is allowed to speak after the close of a public hearing?
He is a, he is a full member of the board.
So it's like having a full member.
With counsel more.
There's no, there's no question. Counsel.
Right.
It's well established in statute. It's well established in our charter.
That's all I care.
Yeah.
So.
As long as.
By the way, he also, he shouldn't be off talking about things he's not supposed to talk about, right? He shouldn't, he shouldn't meet with a bunch of you and causing a quorum even though he didn't count for one.
Yeah.
Right? I mean, he should follow those kinds of limitations. So I've talked to those about him as well. Like, if he is, if he's talking, if he doesn't cause a quorum, really, but.
Yeah.
He should be doing the same things you are.
Yeah.
With respect to talking in public about things like that.
Awesome.
Great.
Just a question. I think that's, that's really helpful and informative. I think the issue, one thing that I can think of is, I think on a couple of occasions, we've asked him directly about his capacity in which he was speaking to the board, and that, that is new information, I think, to me and probably to all of us.
And new to him. And new to him.
Okay.
Yeah, this revelation happened last week. He had emailed a town attorney, probably last year or the year before, never got an answer back. And he asked me about it. He says, hey, like, I had emailed your attorney about this way, way back and never got an answer. I don't know how he found out it was a statute, but he showed me, and I went, I did the research and looked at it. And sure enough, from the onset of this, he's supposed to be part of this, as the first selectman is. And it makes a lot of sense, considering what the board does, and it makes a lot of sense that he wouldn't have a vote. But like I said, the capacity he was in before this, he didn't know he was ex officio for that matter. Which, by the way, would help, he should be able to bring stuff to the board. He's a member of the board, and he's, he's, he is our town engineer, and he's literally, you know, the public works director. He's the guy who you should be coordinating with on some of these things, because there's been a little bit of a disconnect just between the two.
Yeah, we had a recent application with sewer questions, and that'd be right up his alley.
Yeah, or at least, yeah, he'd get the right people on it. But.
The sewer questions go to public utilities. We send them to Tom Beal. I would, I see, Dan mentioned it two weeks ago. You've been very busy, so I don't think you've had the opportunity to go and explain it to the board. But it's more dealing with subdivisions, re-subdivisions, things of that nature. It's very spelled out in the statute that the majority of his role is dealing with subdivisions and things of that nature.
What he tells.
I'm just giving them examples of some of the activities that, so they're more comfortable as to what he's going to be good at. Dealing with roads, I think we did mention at the last meeting, we wanted him to look at the traffic report because he is a traffic engineer, and we sent that out to him and things like that.
Well, I think it's going to be a good thing.
And this came up kind of by accident. He had come to my office with John Matz from down there, and there was an issue with an old, a plan, you know, and they were worried about the drainage system. And they're kind of like, whoa, like how this happened, and they thought like, well, if they'd included, and that's kind of what was the genesis of this. Whether they were aware, I mean, they'll get it all resolved.
Yeah.
But that was the genesis. And he approached me about it. I was like, I didn't know that.
Yeah.
And I'm learning things all the time, about the statutes and the way the rules work. So I just wanted to make sure you understood that.
I appreciate it.
And the way an ex officio member works. Like, they literally, they recognize the chair just as a membership.
Yep.
But they have, they have the full authority to do that except vote.
Excellent.
Anyway, I was at, I gotta go confirm our visions.
All right, and we're gonna move right into our public hearing.
Thank you. Thank you for the numbers.
Thank you. All right, so we're gonna move right into our public hearing, or continue the public hearing. For 105 Milwaukee Avenue, for Kevin's theory, 830 G, the podium of 12 units.
Steve Trinkus, the record professional engineer representing Kevin Cleary. After the last meeting, we drew a cross section through the six unit building going to the west to show that the second floor was easily accessible to the fire department. And I saw a memo, you know, on the Google Drive today. The fire marshal said, that's fine. He didn't realize the windows were only two feet off the grade back there, so. And we're also going to put on top of the window wells, you know, the metal grinded grate, you know, to keep debris and stuff out of them. And also you can stand on those too, but the windows are, the bottom of the windows only that far above ground, so they won't need a ladder to fight a fire. That was, he had a request that we change the no parking sign to a specific sign of, I think, a penalty if you park there. And we're happy to add that as a condition of approval. I only saw that today, and that's really the, that's the only change we have, so.
Excellent.
Did the ADA stuff too, right?
Oh, yes, we made, yes, yes. We made two of the units, the one bedroom that's going to be in the house, and one of the two bedroom units would be the type B ADA units, which are a 36 inch wide door and a bathroom on the first floor. That's, so two of those units, you know, 10% is 1.2, but we always round up. So there will be a two bedroom and a one bedroom.
And they're going to be built ADA or ADA?
They're going to be type B.
Does that mean they have all like the?
No, they, they, the type A is a full wheelchair accessibility. Type B is a wider door and a bathroom that's ADA complying on the first floor.
Excellent.
So they'll fully comply with the type B requirement. There seems to be, quite honestly, a lack of knowledge. You know, I depend on the architects, you know, for this stuff, but architects don't realize that those requirements are in there. So going forward, obviously, we'll incorporate that if we do other ones, so.
Thank you.
Just one other thing.
For what? Oh, yes. Oh, yes, the house. Oh, yes. Yeah, I spoke with Kevin Cleary, the owner. He's going to do new siding, you know, trim and windows, you know, on the house, so it will be nicer looking than what it's there now. You know, and fix up the front porch. So, yeah, he wants it to look nice like the new units, so.
Excellent.
He'll be doing that.
All right, staff, you have anything?
I just have copies of Tom's memo. If any, if you want to look at it, it was a late thing in the drive, and it just basically echoes what Steve just said. I did have one other question, too.
Done.
Oh. Okay. I'm gonna bring up a sore subject. Yes, I'm sorry. So, and it's only because in my personal life, we're dumb people. We don't have a garbage man. We never have. So when you do garbage, and you do, and maybe this, the commission can answer this, do you have to have two garbage pails, recycle and one for?
They generally have one garbage can, and they have a smaller bin for the recycling.
That's the blues, the blues?
And we have blue or different colors.
Okay.
One of my, we have.
So if you have one unit, you have a garbage pail.
And the bin.
And a bit.
Yeah. I mean, one of my clients has a 116 unit. It's manufactured housing in Oxford for garden homes, and that's what they have. Because I drove in there yesterday.
Okay.
So. It works well, you know. I mean, it's more work maybe for the garbage guy, but, you know.
It's just the thought of 22 something.
Well, it's really only. It's really 11. It's 11, one for each unit. Likely they'll probably go on the side of the, you know, the unit for each person, so they'll have to walk out and just, you know, put it in there.
That's, I just needed to understand that.
It actually works well in the field, you know. I mean, I agree, it's kind of counterintuitive, but, you know, the problem with.
I just needed to understand so I could get a visual myself.
You know, my son lives in an apartment complex out in Wyoming. You know, they have a big commercial compactor dumpster thing. And people, even though when it's empty, people will still just put it on the ground. They're not, they don't put it in the dumpster. I mean, you know, now granted, these are mostly college kids, so maybe goes, but, well, I know there's adults living in the complex too, but, you know, each person's going to have their own, that's their own garbage. They're not worrying about everybody else. So it's, it works, it works well when we've used them, so.
I didn't want to. Okay, thank you.
No problem.
All right, open up the commission comments.
Almost said, thank you.
The health director had asked for something to be done, some sort of expert about the property. I'm just wondering.
Oh, well, one of her early comments was concerned about asbestos in the old house.
Right.
But the old house was completely gutted in the 80s, down to the framing and rebuilt. So anything that was built, you know, from the original house in the late 50s or 60s was removed, so.
I thought she was talking about the property, making sure there was, because it's.
Well, there's no, there's no grading that's going to cause any ponding on, you know, the site. I think that was one of her concerns, but even those low spots we saw in the field, which I have no idea what they're from, you know, I've never seen water ponding, and I've been out there after a rainstorm, so the soil infiltrates. You know, but all of our grading is direct flow, is sheet flow, so there won't be any low spots that collect water.
He has a 30 day extension before, maybe as last time, so we still have more time, or is that it?
What's going on? That's a question for you guys.
Yes.
They gave an extension again.
Yes, that's correct.
So what, what, when do we have it?
Today.
Today?
The end of the month. That's correct.
Yeah.
Even though they didn't meet last week, I mean, two weeks ago.
That's correct.
Okay.
It's a statutory, it's a statutory extension. Given in 30 to 35 day increments.
Anything else?
No, sir.
Well, for the record too, while Diane's looking, I did actually go back and watch the 311 25. Excellent. Meeting, and the special meeting.
Excellent.
Is there anybody in the public that had any questions, comments? You still like that? I'm sorry.
Steve, the ownership of this property, the whole property, right?
Yeah, yeah.
Therefore, there's no homeowner association involved or anything?
Yeah, no, no, yeah, no HOA. Kevin will be, you know, the landlord. He will likely use a management company similar to, I know, what Tim Draper is using. And to administer, you know, the rents and the affordability, et cetera.
So he's still in control of any maintenance or any of the garbage pickup, all that he did.
And as I said, I think the last meeting, when I was on Zoom, that the sidewalk that we're proposing from our driveway heading east to the crosswalk, Kevin will maintain that, you know, during the winter.
Okay.
The garbage that was along that one side, you know, all those chairs, everything.
All of that's going to go, that's all going away, yeah, yeah, yep.
I don't know if that's the current manner.
It's, I think it's a lot, it's the current tenants, so. But when we developed the property, all of that garbage is going.
And they're going to have some requirements to not leave a lot of stuff around like that.
Well, they're not going to be able to. There's going to be garbage cans. That's where you put everything, you know. The improvements, that's not going to be allowed to, you know, it's a good way to wind up not being a renter if you are going to throw things out the window or out the door.
Okay, so she had said, oh, you had said in February 7th letter, it's not standard practice for a homeowner to retain a licensed environmental professional to perform a phase one assessment.
That's correct, and then I, actually, but that, after that, then I talked to Kevin, who said the whole house was stripped down of the framing in the 80s before he bought it and re, you know, new siding, new sheet rock. So anything old from the old house was gone, so, you know. And, you know, lead and asbestos weren't used in the 80s for siding or other things, so. So there's no need to do one, because everything was gone beforehand.
I still, on the Google Drive, did not see how things have changed without the house. I don't know. I don't see an update. I mean, with the house. What's on the Google Drive still is, I don't know. I, you know, the large plans, you know, are here, but I had to get me given out. I, I've looked at that several times. Have you seen Google Drive with that, with the house still there? Because the first one going around was with how that.
The current plans I sent a week or so ago, they, they show the house remaining in place in its current configuration.
Okay, because I, you know, I haven't looked at one of those large.
Yeah.
And you won't?
Yeah, I've seen it, yeah.
I've more upstairs as well.
It's there.
Yeah. It's on the plan, you know. There's no new unit over the house.
That's what I'm looking at myself, you know.
If you want, I'll point it out on plans, if you have one there.
The house has always been there.
It's always been there, but in the early versions.
The house has always been there, Diane.
Yeah, but they were getting rid of it, and then I.
Initially, yeah.
Initially, they were getting rid of it.
Yeah.
Very, very beginning.
Yeah. And, you know, we kept this.
Okay. So, and those current tenants had a lot of cars there, so they'll have to deal with that.
Yeah, well, we have enough parking for, you know, again, for, you know, on the site, since we dropped one unit, but we kept the parking the same, so.
After the public, anything, anyone here, questions, comments, concerns? Anyone online, questions, comments, concerns, 105 Milwaukee?
If we could close the public hearing.
Is that a motion?
I'll make a motion to close the public hearing.
Say.
All in favor? Any opposed? All right. Public hearing is closed, 105 Milwaukee Avenue. All right, we're gonna move right into our next public hearing, our continuing one for 53 Taylor Avenue, TGN Sun, 830 G, site plan for 26 units. Refused time and law refused to this application?
Oh, yeah, sure.
No, I talked about it earlier. I have no, no.
Yeah, I know.
Do your magic. That's all that matters. Don't look at me.
I'm just waiting on, opening that up.
Oh, don't look at me.
There you go. Doesn't he need that too?
No.
The keyboard? Oh, okay, never mind. I mind my own business.
You just take him down.
Yeah.
All right, next on the agenda, yeah, we already said that, 53 Taylor Ave, floor is yours. Steve Trinkus, professional engineer representing the applicant, TGN Suns. So we had, we submitted a traffic study from Kermit Wa, who's a traffic engineer up in Meriden on March 5th, which basically, you know, says the level of service on, you know, Taylor Avenue is A now will be A later. You know, the sightlines are adequate. You know, we submitted this. He actually makes a suggestion, which would be subject to the police commission approving, you know, signage at the intersection, not the intersection, at the sharp corner, you know, to the north of the site. And we also stated, I think, the initial hearing, you know, working when we put in the water and sewer on Taylor Avenue to cutting that rock back on the corner, which would definitely improve, you know, the ability to see around the corner a little bit. So whatever, you know, public utilities or DPW was like, I know Tony's done a lot of work for the town. We'd be happy to, you know, do that to, you know, improve that intersection. So we also provided, you know, the, last week, you know, response to public utility comments. Mostly this was, you know, sewer and water. We understand that putting the sewer and water in six foot apart will likely disturb most of Taylor Avenue, which was repaved recently. So, yes, we'll repave the entire road with, you know, it'll be milled and repaved. The typical, when you put in utilities, what you do is, you know, you, you put them in, you backfill them compacted, you put a temporary patch over it, and you let it settle for six months to a year. Then you come back, you cut a foot wider than your patch, and that's your permanent, you know, patch. But in this case, we would do the temporary patch, let everything settle, then come in, mill the road, and then repaint the entire road. So, you know, it'll all get redone once, you know, all the utilities are done. When I initially spoke with Tom Villa, Public Utilities, he said they do not have all of their reservoir and water details available yet, but he will get them to me for incorporation onto the plans. But, you know, they're not available yet. I don't know if they're drawing them in AutoCAD or whatever, but he said that. So we did extend the water line. See, to. Yeah, they, originally I had the water line stopping just about our driveway. We extended it to our, to our southern property line. So then if the town line wishes to extend it, it'll be to the next property to the south. We showed separate potable and fire protection lines each building. They asked that some of the pipes diameter be increased to six inch, which we did. They suggested moving the hydrant, which we also did, as far as that goes. You know, again, sewer laterals were, we had four inch. They asked that they be six inch. We, you know, we changed that, as far as that goes. You know, we also had clean outs on the plan again, as they commented. We also had, you know, comments in SLR, which we fully addressed. The existing conditions survey by New England Land Surveying. Let me just go to the existing conditions map, which is a little farther down here. They've provided, this is the big outcrop of ledge right in here. And they provided an outline of the ledge outcrop, but also they gave me all the spot elevations they took on the ledge rock. And I then created the contours here over the ledge in order to figure out the earthwork volumes associated with that. But, you know, the limit of ledge shown on their map does meet the standard for an existing conditions map under A2. They don't have to show that contour, and quite honestly, having done survey years ago, on a large outcrop like that, we would just locate the bottom of it, you know, and say ledge outcrop, as far as that goes. Todd had asked for a stop bar and stop sign, which we added to the plans. When we had the sidewalk on the 8th, it was clear, the sightline is very good from the driveway in both directions. I did send David, at the end of the day, I got a different type of traffic software, because the one I had been using, they no longer support the version of CAD that I have. So this is a standalone program. I'm actually having a tutorial tomorrow with one of the sales reps. But I sent him a, based on me playing around with the software, the vehicle turning movement plan for a WB 40 foot long truck, and it does work going in, turning, and, you know, being able to, you know, back up to the background area.
Mr. Trinkus, if you, if you would like to share that plan, I have added it to the Google Drive for this meeting. Ms. Martinez, you can go to the site plan folder, and the file name is Taylor-Avenue-1.
Okay, all right, I got it, Dave. Thank you. So this, I just, this was me playing with the software. I'm not, it's, it's not fully correct, but it does show that, you know, the vehicle, a car truck can come in, through the site, come here, back around, and go back out. But on this hearing, I would ask, I think, can we have time, Beth, on this hearing?
I was going to bring that up and talk to Neil about it.
Well, we'll provide an extension, but what I'd like to do is, it just extends it so I can provide you with the proper turning movement plan. Like I said, I just got this software two days ago, and, you know, was having trouble even opening or drawing in it, so. But it does show that it works, and we'll do this for both the WB 40 truck, we'll also do it for a garbage truck, which I believe is what Todd asked for. So that would be the main reason for, you know, just continuing the hearing, so. So, you know, again, there's bits and pieces of curbing on Taylor Avenue. Obviously, what, we repaved the road, any curbing that's there is going to be replaced, as far as that goes. Likely, Todd had asked about putting in batuminous in this area right off the driveway where it's kind of eroded. And obviously, since we're going to have the repaving the road, you know, curbing can go in along that, at that point, as far as that goes. The, he had commented on the ramps into the ADA unit building here as being 8.3%. Well, an ADA's ramp is 1 to 12, which is 8.3%. So the ramps meet. We have six foot, and you have six inches differential.
Do you have railings on those ramps?
You don't need them on the 1 to 12.
112, are you sure? I would check that.
Yeah, yeah. Well, a ramp like that, it's only, you know, literally that wide. We'll check.
1 to 20, you know. I might be mistaken, but I'm sure 1 to 20 is when you don't need a rally, but I would check if you need a.
You mostly in handicap spaces in the parking lot, you see the 112 ramp, but that doesn't have railings on it. That's what we're going. But 8.3% is a 1 to 12. You know, he had a concern about pavement up in, again, this area being, you know, like half a percent. Water will run on half a percent pave slope. It won't run on half a percent grass, but it, it will run on that. You know, he had a question of the handicap grades. It's actually just under 1%. It's 0.98%. We added signage that was requested. We could not find any records of existing septic tank and/or pump chamber. I would, or septic system, I would suspect, you know, that it's somewhere in the front of the house. Obviously, we're going to have to uncover it, and it'll be disposed of in accordance with the health department requirements. Same thing with the. Uh, same thing with the well. Um, we, he did ask about, uh, wells on off-site properties, uh, because the stormwater quality manual has a hundred foot setback. Um, there is a well for the house that's behind us, uh, right here, and, uh, the, you know, our stormwater system is over here, so we're just outside of that radius. Um, uh, there was no well on the property south here, um, that's within a hundred feet of, uh, the stormwater system up front. Uh, so we provided that. Um, we added, at his request, a, a orange poly construction fence around the stormwater infiltration system up here. To protect the area during construction. Uh, we changed the note, um, we added some additional erosion control measures. Uh, out at, uh, this back corner and around the gallery system. Um, I think, uh, he asked about turf reinforcement on the two to one slopes, it's not necessary on a two to one slope. Um, what we also did, and I should mention this upfront, Beth had talked to the applicant. About using, uh, actually, the duplex footprint that you have on seventy-two reservoir. Um, and we looked at that, Tony asked me to look at that, uh, to put in six or seven of those, which would bring the density down to twelve to fourteen. Those you, those buildings are about twenty foot longer than these buildings, and what I did was laying them out here, uh, with the backs going down the slope. We would wind up with, uh, five hundred feet of retaining wall, about ten foot in height, and then additional buildings out here. Um, we'd wind up with about a twenty foot retaining wall. So, I mean, significant increase site work in that, so what we did was, in the, uh, what was formerly the eight unit, uh, one bedroom units. We're gonna make these two bedrooms, so we're dropping from twenty-six to twenty-two units. So, the three unit buildings will remain, you know, one bedrooms upstairs, downstairs as separate. Uh, these will be, you know, an upstairs downstairs, a two bedroom unit, similar to what we just saw at Cleary's, you know, property, so, uh, the density was reduced. Uh, by four.
I hate to tell you this, Steve, but, um, I did have another conversation with Tony DiOrio today, who was in my office.
Okay.
And we want to continue having those discussions.
Well, he didn't reach out to me, but I looked at it and it's a.
I'm just saying.
Alright, well.
I, I see Attorney Marcus is on the call too, but, um, I did speak with Mr. DiOrio today in my office, and.
They really, I'll.
We want to continue the conversation next week. So, Neil, I am gonna be asking, we are, anyways, they're gonna be asking for a thirty-five day extension.
I think, again, for the record, Neil Marcus remotely, joining you tonight from Crested Butte, Colorado. Uh, very informally dressed, but I'll be back to get it next week. But anyway, I wanted to listen in and participate if necessary. Uh, Steve, I think, already indicated that, uh, he would like, uh, to have this re, uh, this, uh, hearing. Extended for the purpose of finishing his work on, on, uh, traffic, so we will get you a thirty-five day extension, and that should be adequate. And quite honestly, I encourage you to talk to Tony, uh, whatever you can work out, that makes an improvement to the plan, is a good idea.
Thank you, Neil.
Thank you.
Jealous.
That's right, yeah.
Oh, you, boy, if you saw this, the, if you saw Rocky Mountains out the window over here to my right, you'd be very jealous.
Alright.
That ain't the parking lot behind you.
Big parking lot. So, um, uh, he asked, we put, well, and. In reducing this building from eight to four, it also, I had seven spaces here previously. Which I eliminated, which I only put four here, because I need less, and that pulled the retaining wall away from the property line, so there's plenty of room to do the geo grid. Uh, also, you know, this oak will remain when we put in the wall, while it's, you know, within the drip line on, you know, the, the north side of it. The tree, you know, will stay and be healthy, um, I've done this, I did this up in, um. Blasenberry on a site with a much larger tree, and that was six years ago, and the tree is still very healthy, so, uh, we can do that. Uh, he asked if the water and sewer lines be ten foot apart in the road, uh, public utilities is six foot, that's what I designed them as. Um, and, uh, uh, we made sure there was three and a half feet of cover over sewer lines, there was one potential conflict of. Um, the sanitary sewer with this drainage pipe right here. Uh, so I wound up adding a manhole and, uh, going under the drainage pipe, so we, you know, resolved that conflict, um, as far as that goes. Um, when we did the soil testing on the site, I did not have a, you know, grading plan in mind or stormwater plan. Um, so the infiltration test was done about five feet below grade, the system is deeper, but. The test pits all out here, the soils were uniform, and we hit the gravel, they were gravel all the way down twelve to fifteen foot. Um, so, we will, we'd be happy to do one, you know, later at the time of construction, but because the material was the same, the infiltration rate would be the same or potentially faster. And again, we're only using fifty percent of the slowest observed rate. Um, so, um, we, uh. Uh, the stone trench that's over here, um, it's not a level spreader, but the pipe is into the stone here. Because of the coarse sand and gravel, I don't think there's ever gonna be a discharge from either one of these systems, because the underlying soils are so coarse of material, uh, to infiltrate. Um, we're using of the storm tech systems, the isolator rows, which is here and here, these are the S C eight hundred units. The gallery systems are the thirty-five hundred system, so on the detail, we just noted that the thirty-five hundred isolated row is not being used. Um, to clarify that, uh, as far as that goes. Uh, we do conform to the Bethel, uh, stormwater standards, um, we added the capacity of the pipes, uh, to the stormwater report. Uh, these are slab on grade, so there's no footing drains for these buildings. Um, I had turned off the boundary layers for the watershed map, so those are back on. Uh, we had the blasting contractor do a blasting plan for this, uh, Todd had asked about geotechnical evaluation. A geotech evaluation is where they do borings to determine how to design a foundation. He's, a geotech is not gonna tell you how to remove the rock here, but, uh, in Rosia Blasting, who Mrs. DiOrio uses, put together a blasting plan, which we submitted. As part of the response. Um, and again, all material processing of the rock, you know, will be done in accordance with the federal regulations, so. Again, you know, we have no, I'll talk to Tony tomorrow, you know, about the unit specs, and, you know, then we'll get the traffic plan.
We're talking, Tony and I are gonna speak next week. He was in, he was in today's, our agreement was, we're gonna talk Monday or Tuesday next week.
Well, I'll.
In regards to that, um, and also, could you just say again about a geotech?
Yeah, a geotech engineer, they do borings to determine how to design a foundation for a road, they don't tell you how to remove rock. They, they, that's not what they do, they determine the soil conditions and tell you how to design a, a foundation or a road base. Um, but that's not what, they don't do it, I talked to, uh, Jim from, um, Soil Testing of Oxford, who I use routinely for borings, and he's like, no, we don't. You know, we don't do that one, if you want to build on rock, you just drill and you pin into the rock, so he goes, you don't need a geotech evaluation, but we're removing the rock here. And that's why we have the blasting plan, you know, put together.
Thank you.
So, so that's all we have for tonight, Neil will get you that extension, so.
Thank you.
Beth, do you have anything to add besides what you mentioned, your discussions with Mr. DiOrio?
Um, I would say that I did refer the traffic report. Uh, to, um, uh, police station, and I also referred it to Eric. Because Eric is a traffic engineer, so I thought it would be good to get his.
An actual member of the.
Which, this was prior to, and, you know, I just thought it was good to get his input.
Where, where is Eric working out, I kind of missed the.
Right over on the other side of this.
Okay, and, and.
Okay. He's not, uh, sorry.
Okay.
Eric, that's it?
For now, yes.
Uh, Commissioner, comments?
Yeah, I'd want, um. Some of the proximity's of wells to the blasting area, is there any kind of, uh. Insurance, in case somebody has a well?
Yes, the, the blaster will do a pre-blast survey of all the adjacent properties, as long as the people let them, they will catalog the well, they will, uh. Take pictures of the foundation to document, you know, if there's any cracks now, so if there's a crack later and there wasn't one there, you know, that's cause and effect. Um, so they will do the pre-blast survey, I mean, the, the only well is, uh, this one here, and then the, the house on the, uh. The corner downhill of us, because Tim has public water below us, um, so that's it, I can tell you, years ago, you know, Project Woodbury, the. Last lot on this road, put his well literally a foot off the property line to prevent quote-unquote expansion of the road past this house. Which we did, and the zero blasted from Georgetown, uh, because it was shaly rock, and they put a seismograph on the well, and they, zero readings on the well. So, they can blast accordingly to.
Mike, can I add to, add to that question, Ken, if you're done?
Uh, well, I got one more question.
Sure.
If, if, say, two months later, after you're all done. There is an issue with someone's well, what is the repercussions and what are the options?
Then it's, you know, if, if, if there was no issues before, um, then, you know, obviously, it would be Tony and the blaster would, you know, have to repair the well. That's why they do the pre-blast survey to have a baseline.
That's why I asked, because the, when we did the other building, John below there, that guy across the street had some issues, but didn't show up until later. So I just wanted to.
Well, knowing, if you have wells nearby, you know, uh, you know, you're gonna change how you do your blasting. I mean, you do small charges and you crack it, instead of the big bang and popping the rock up in the air.
Just so I check.
Yep.
I lost it. Did the, um, your blasting consultant, did they drill through the rock to see what, what the rock was made of?
No, they don't, it doesn't affect their plan, you know, they will, at the time they go to remove the rock and they do the drills, they will look at the, you know, material coming out, and that depends. And they adjust their blasting pattern to the material they see in the field. So.
Um, and then the, the, the limits of your, and it, I think you showed around the corner of how far you're paving, you're from. From where you're tapping into the utilities to the tent, to the property, to the other side of the property line where you bring the water.
Yeah, we're bringing, this is the manhole, uh, in front of Draper, so from here, you know, all the way up to our southern property line, which is, you know. Actually, a few, you know, to here will be repaved, so, pretty substantial section, Taylor Avenue.
It, it, oh, I guess this goes in more of an engineering, is, 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 we're, we're going through that whole process, and, and, and Mr. DiOrio's kind enough to say he's gonna work on that corner. Is there a widening required of this road?
That would be a question for, um, D P W. And, um, I'd be more than happy to ask.
I, 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 I would appreciate that, and, and I'm not looking to spend anyone's money, but if we're, if we're repaving this entire road around, it's such a tight corner, I think it's worth looking at.
I agree.
Yeah, the section before, you know, I mean, uh, you know. Before the corner is really wide, there's two vehicles, but, you know, the rock outcrop right on the corner is, is, I think it scares people more than anything else. Like, we're driving around, but then the straight section coming up is fairly flat, you know, that's what, you know, Kermit, the traffic engineer looked at. So, I mean, you've got a pretty steep slope on the west side of Taylor Avenue as it goes up. Uh, there may be some room, uh, within the right of way on the east side for widening out a little bit in there, but I think getting rid of the rock would improve a lot. So.
What do you see being in the process to do that, that's the butter slot, right?
Well, that would be, yeah, we'd have to, you know, D P W, you know, would have to talk to the, you know, the neighbor, the right of way line. You know, it's not the edge of the road, it's back, so if the town wants to widen it within the right of way line, they can actually do that without, you know, they. I'll notify the neighbors, but you can pretty much do that anyway, I mean, that, my old house in South Creek, they wanted to do that, and, you know, if they. Widen it within the right of way, they let me know they're doing it, but, you know.
I think this is a really, that's a really appealing part of this project.
Ken, sorry, yeah, one more question.
Sorry about that.
Um, the, uh. Sewer and water from the previous project was in this stepped. System.
The step trenches, these are two separate trenches.
So you're gonna go from a step to, uh.
Yeah, difference is six foot apart. Yeah, you know, this, because this, what we originally wanted to do here was basically, uh, you know, a two inch, we're gonna pump the sewage from Draper down. And put a water line, and the code allows you to step trench.
Right.
Um, but then they actually wound up, um, I think splitting it, because, you know, the sanitary li- lines over here and the water's out here. So they, they weren't in the same trench, uh, um, where they wound up, but these are six foot apart, which is the standard.
Right.
You know, two separate trenches.
You're gonna make, uh, provisions for people to tie in?
Yeah, there'll be, there'll be paths for each of them, and, as I think of my response, we said, because D P W said, you know, you want to. Get the first floor elevations of the adjacent houses, you know, some, like the laterals, and, you know, if this is approved, the surveyors would, again, their permission would do that. And then we'd lay out the lateral and water lines to the edge of the road, you know, so that they could then tap into it when they wanted to. Okay, so.
Um, the timing of all of this seems like it's really tight as far as, you know, wanting to make sure that. You know, you can do it, that it's even, it's feasible to remove all of that, you know, eight inch or ten inch or whatever of fill in the back of the property. Um, you know, getting it around the corner, I know that the, um, police were concerned about the big trucks, all those trucks going by. Um, coming through Bethel, um, going into Newtown, I mean, to Redding or whatever, um, and. And I, my concern is, if it affects somebody's well, you know, doing last time. They don't have the watering sewage situation that you're gonna be putting in until later, so they would be without water or whatever.
Well, then, I mean, if something like that happened, either, you, you know, the applicant would have to pay to put in a well for that person if they damaged it, for one. But in this case, the water and sewer is the first thing we're doing. You know, we've got to bring that up the road, you know, to our, so that's gonna be there before we work on our site itself, so that's the first thing, but. If the well got damaged, you know, and, you know, they couldn't provide, you know, temporary public water, they would have to, you know, provide. Uh, you know, have a new well drilled for those people. That's why you do the pre-blast survey, so you know, you know, if there's any issue, you look at, you know, with wells. You look at the yield reports, I mean, the, the guy I had Woodbury, he didn't want anybody stepping over the line, so we couldn't look at his well, but, um. Uh, but we've used the, uh, well completion reports from the town to know what his yield was. And then afterwards, there was absolutely no damage, he tested it, and he actually had a higher yield than what he had before. So, uh, but again, they didn't shake his well at all, you know, and they were literally this far away from it, so.
The big rock that's on the corner there, um, that you're talking about, it's right close to that home, so.
Yeah, the, the home is fine, yeah, but again, that, you, you're really not gonna remove the rock, you're gonna split the face of it off. You know, so that'll likely be hammered off, you know, um, instead of blasted, to just cut the rock face back. You know, it's, it's right down to the edge of the road, and I think that's what scares everybody going around the corner.
Do you think it goes down below that?
Oh, I mean, it goes down, it goes down underground, we're likely, I, I think with the water and sewer, we're gonna find rock under the road, I know Tim did, so. Um, but, you know, but again, you're gonna cut it from the ground surface back, you know, level with the ground, and then, you know, cutting it back, so that we can see, and it's not right at the corner. I think, you know, I drove by there, and I watched a couple of other people go by, and I, I really kind of got the sense that, it just. It, it freaks people out a little bit, because the rock is right there at the edge of the road, you know, so they're very hesitant going around the corner, so if you cut it back. So it's not right there, you know, it's easy to drive around it.
The geo thermal engineer that, I think you were thinking that they would know, um, geo, yeah, geotechnical, whatever. Um, but they would know if that would have any effect on the, on wells of the, that have been with the, uh, with the chemical company.
Well, again.
Concerned about, you know, the.
Well, this, I mean.
I know that's.
Yeah, I mean, the outcrop of rock is, you know, it, you know, right here in the middle of the site, when you get out here, this is all bank runs sand and gravel, and whole ridge going. That way, so we're not, this is what we're digging out, but the, the rock is only, you know, right in here that we're taking out, so. Yeah, you know.
Aren't there two outcroppings of rocks?
No, this is the main, this is the main one, what's out here, there's a couple of surface bowers, but that's.
And they don't need to be.
Well, you can dig them out, they're just surface rocks, so.
I was glad that you had the place to review the traffic study. I guess those were the, you know, the things that have already been dealt with, concerns.
Doug?
Uh, no additional comments, although I will say, uh, or questions, I will say that I appreciate appears to be spirit of cooperation to make this the, uh. Most productive plan for the, for the neighborhood as well as the builder.
Mr. Ignard?
Uh, Steve, does the retaining wall is coming in any contact with the rock outcroppings or?
Actually, we don't have, um, on our plan, Bob, we don't have any retaining walls. Behind this unit here, this is a graded slope going down, um, with a rock cut, this is actually a rock slope going back up. To match the grade, so we have no retaining walls with this.
So you mentioned retaining walls before when you were.
Yeah, yeah, when I looked at the footprints of, uh, what Tony and Mike Delorio built on, uh, Knollwood. Yeah, yeah, when I looked at the footprints of, uh, what Tony and Mike Delorio built on, uh, Knollwood, those units are duplexes, but they're about twenty foot longer than these, uh, units. So, they go much further down the slope, and the only way to, uh, to, you know, create a level area, you know, even just five feet off the back of the house, you would need about five hundred feet of retaining wall along the north property line, um, you know, to make that work, and then, uh, as the units were, you know, more of a square than the long linear rectangles, you know, one out here, because the slope drops off, actually wound up being about a twenty foot high retaining wall. So, but, you know, I'll discuss that, you know, with Tony.
Okay.
But is the only tree that you're keeping the oak tree?
Uh, there are some, um, yeah, I mean, the, the back area beyond the stormwater system, you just, uh, go to the existing conditions, that'll be easier. Um, I mean, you know, the stormwater system is right here, but, you know, the, the trees are shown on this plan, they're right in the middle of the development, but past the stormwater system, the, the rest of this, you know, point of property, that's all wooded, and that's going to remain the same. So we're only, you know, clearing stuff within the area of the development, that's it. But, you know, there are, you know, the trees concentrated, some on the rock, and, you know, just, you know, in the area where the units are, you know, the rest of the site's open, but that back southeast, southwest end is going to remain as is, so, all wooded.
Any comments from?
Excuse me, I have one other question.
Please.
In regards to the well, um, Ken was mentioning before, um, are you familiar with, uh, contamination of wells caused by blasting?
Oh, I, I've seen it, you know.
It's manganese, I believe.
Well, it, it, it depends on the rock that the well was in.
Okay, so.
You know.
I'm kind of, I'm, I've become familiar with that because that has happened in at least one instance here in town. And, you know, I think the commission was interested in the, the casings and so on and so forth for the wells, but my question is, in regards to whatever activity takes place on this property, could you see the possibility of water testing having to take place to ensure that the activity did not result in contamination or the need for one of those manganese, if that's the right?
Yeah, well, yeah, it's manganese for most.
But I mean, I know it's like a, it's a, it's a very complicated system that has to be installed in order to take care of the issue.
Iron and manganese or, you know, saw prints will take them out, I actually have just an iron, uh, system in my house, we have a little bit of iron. But if, if the owner allows a water test, you know, prior to our blasting, you know, yes, they could test it and test it later. You know, but again, the wells are cased down in bedrock, and based on our test pits, I mean, we're down fifteen feet still in gravel, so I don't know how deep their casing would be, but, you know, yes, if, if the owner allowed it, doing a water test would be a, a good thing, that's.
But that's just one example of other things that, you know, it's a little bit different when, I, in my opinion, it's a little bit different when you're dealing with properties that are hooked up to sewer and water. One less thing that you have to worry about when you're doing this kind of activity. But when you're dealing with properties that are, you have wells close by, depending on the depth of the well and, um, the casings around it, I mean, obviously, you're aware, these are old homes that are located there, and I think there's one down below that is rather updated. So, I, my concern is the effect on, much more effect than just actually excavating out seventeen thousand cubic yards of material.
Yeah, and I think if, if the, let me go back to the old man with the well is shown, I mean, I think if, you know, if, say, this rock, rock outcrop was this whole back area, and this well had, you know, twenty foot of casing before you hit bedrock, so it basically led was very high to here, it would be, you're likely going to have a little bit of shaking. But, you know, we're cutting the rock that's really above ground, you know, not going very deep to take it out, but if they let us do a water test, it's a good thing to do, it's inexpensive, and it gives you, again, a baseline. Um, you know, but it's not uncommon with both iron or manganese that, um, you know, in my old house in South Hurry, you know, we had higher iron, and then actually, after about ten years, the, the iron about less and less. So, you know, metals, you know, change in the wells in the water, sometimes on the road, but doing a test gives you a baseline.
I think it should be part of whatever pre-blast survey.
Yeah.
I'm still confused on the geotech aspect of it, and I'll discuss that more with engineering and give you more information regarding to that.
You know, again, geo.
Um, the, the biggest issue is dealing with the, how creative the property in relation to what can be built on the property, and it, I, I, I'm still struggling with the fact that you're, you know, you're basically have much more allowance to do what the proposal is doing under the eight thirty G state statute versus if it was a regular subdivision or you were trying to create, um, a, a different type of community, you could take into consideration of not having to excavate out that amount of material and work with the geography of the property better.
Well, no matter what you do, you would at least level this rock down to the existing grade either side of it, so that's about sixteen to seventeen feet of rock that comes out anyway, just to create a level area. So the rock, I mean, if the rock was way out here in the southwest end, we wouldn't be having an issue, but it's right literally in the middle of the property. And it's, you know, and again, the shape of the property is, you know, limits, you know, you have a flatter area here, the house is about here, you know, the top ridge line is where the lawn is, and then you've got the slope downhill, you've got the ledge outcrop with the slope that really drops off, and then the wooded area, again, it's this narrow, almost a knife ridge that pitches off both ways.
Do you have a Google or do you own this?
Um, I don't, um, I don't know if David can pull that up.
Now, no, please don't.
All right.
Okay.
Um, any comments, questions from the public here? Yep, come on up.
I have lots of questions. Um, still in touch in fifty-eight Taylor Avenue, so, um, he mentioned, um, survey for houses, uh, specifically which houses would be covered for the survey, if I may ask?
Yeah, it would be, let me pull the plan up, and what Public Utilities asked us, um, is, you know, prior to, you know, doing the work out here, that the homes from the corner coming up Taylor Avenue up to our southern property line that are on the east side, that, uh, in order to set the, uh, elevations for the sewer and water lines to shoot the first floor elevation and/or if you know where your soil line, say, comes out of the house for your current septic that comes out the front, shooting that elevation so we know, you know, to lay out the laterals, so that's a request, you know, from the Public Utilities at the time, you know, we do the sewer extension.
So specifically, up to what house you would look into the survey?
It, it would be to our southern, you know, would be from the, the corner here, um, and, you know, all the way up to, let me go back to the existing, you know, to, you know, just past where our driveway is, there's a cedar tree here, and it would be, you know, the house that's opposite that.
Where about houses further than that?
Not at this time.
From experience with the last project.
Yeah, I think what you're talking about, I apologize, you're talking about surveys for as far as attaching utilities, I think what this lady's talking about is pre-blasting surveys.
Correct.
Again, the pre-blast survey generally is the adjacent properties, I would check with the blaster, but generally it's within, you know, a hundred to two hundred feet of the property of where they're blasting, that's the limit of what they do.
Can we check with?
Yeah, I'll check with the blaster.
Blasting, for that question.
I will, um, oh, I will check with the fire marshal, the fire marshal oversees blasting permits and items of that nature, and I think I know what you're asking, and I'll ask him that question in regards to that.
Uh, also, uh, I'm very concerned about the chemical company that's there because you can't guarantee how it will affect the.
The cap?
How it will affect what will happen, uh, you know, when, uh, when you blast and movement, like I said, we lost water and I don't want this to happen again, it costs me thousands of dollars, and why should I be out of money now?
No, whatever's on, again, pre-blast survey, there's no contamination on this site. You know, Vanderbilt is way downhill toward west.
For now, but what if after this blasting, there's something happens?
Well, that's why there's a pre-blast survey done to, you know, to create a baseline. And again, I have worked with blasters in forty years that have blasted next to an existing stone foundation of a house and not cracked that. So, they can, you know, the years ago, they would drill holes, they'd put the mat on it, they'd blow up, and, you know, the mat would jump ten feet in. You know, now blasters will drill a bunch of smaller holes very close, you know, in spacing, smaller charges, and they basically go up on microsecond timing, and they crack the rock in place, literally, they just crack it, it doesn't blow up into big pieces, but it cracks in place, and then you dig it out. So, you know, again, they put seismic graphs on, you know, close by residences or well, which, you know, can have a zero, you know, a zero reading, so, you know, they're not looking to create problems, trust me.
Well, you, you can't guarantee, uh, my next question is how many, and we raised that concern last time, how many trucks we will have going back and forth?
I'll get to that answer, I don't have it off the top of my head.
Because I know it was asked, um, last time, and you're supposed to get the answer. And what, um, let's see. How will you be minimizing pollution for residents going for those trucks going back and forth?
I mean, vehicles drive up and down Taylor Avenue.
Not that much of those big trucks.
Well, cars blew just about as much as the trucks, I mean, that's, that's not.
I would argue.
Well, we, I respect that, but that's, you know, vehicles go up and down the road all the time, so.
So there's no, um, I have a question here, maintaining safe of air quality during construction?
Well, dust is, dust has to be controlled, uh, by watering, um, or applying, um, there's organic compounds, calcium.
Will you be doing that?
Well, the blaster, the contractor, because they don't want to deal with dust, so there are, you know, a lot of times they have a water truck, water, the ground, the surface, um, mostly silt and clay soils are very fine, they get ground and they create a lot of dust. This is bank run sand and gravel, which, you know, doesn't really blow anywhere, it's a coarse material, it, it sits. But again, that's a construction issue, they use water to water the site constantly, you know, especially in the summer, so the dust doesn't occur because it's a void surface, so.
Another question.
Well, someone else can go because I have to leave through my notes, if I have more questions.
Does anyone else here in, in person have any questions or comments? Uh, David, anyone online raising their hand? I can't really see the.
There was a gentleman who had his hand raised earlier, Jason Haslop, but he wrote a text comment in, uh, the chat, the in-call messages to say, quote, "My mic is not working, my email sent on the two twenty-five was not added to the public comments."
Can we make sure that we have that?
We are looking for it now, and we do not see it.
Okay.
So staff will clarify with that with him. If, if he's on the, on the call, tell him to contact their office tomorrow morning, and we'll clarify where that email went. And we'll get it, he can resend it, we'll straighten that out.
Okay.
All right.
For the marksman.
Uh, Beth? I've got a question about bonds.
About?
A bond.
Yeah.
So, is there any kind of requirement to have a bond to ensure potential well issues?
The only thing I can think of, you know, when you talk about potential well issues, say if you, I, I've seen similar situations where you may carry a, a maintenance bond for five years to ensure that there's, the plants grow, or, you know, the stormwater manage, uh, the system. Um, in this instance, I've never seen a bond, I don't see why you couldn't have a bond.
I mean, she brought up a really good point, you know, six months later and.
Well, I've seen it, I, I, I've seen it, I've saw it in another part of Taylor Avenue after forty-nine was done, and it was really after the fact, and it was, you know, there was no real proof that that was a result of the actions that took place in forty-nine Taylor. So, I mean, if you want something along those lines, I'm sure that at some point, we could work that out, and I, I could investigate it if you get to that point.
Yeah, something to talk about, well, Kenny, there'd also be a construction bond for the water and sewer too.
Yeah, I'm thinking after you're all done, you know, that's for a couple, few years. So we did, we found the letter?
Yeah, I found it.
It's in the, it's in the record file.
Yeah, I'll have to double, I can't, I don't have access to double check the drive-in.
Okay.
We'll make sure it's in there.
Yeah, but it, but it's in, but it's in the folder, and it's stamped February twenty-fifth.
Okay, thank you.
Okay.
Um, as far as air quality goes, um, my professional, we are actually doing a large excavation job where we do have air quality monitors. I'd like your client to, to look into potentially having those while, you know, blasting and excavations going on because, uh, they will go off, you, with all your mitigation efforts, I'm sure they won't go off, but it's just another layer of protection and comfortability for neighbors.
Did you respond to the Bethel Health Department's letter on January twenty-eighth?
Um, I don't think so, but, um, you know, but again, there's no, uh, health code issues because we have water and sewer on the site.
Right, but she brought up some other things. Some of the things that I.
I'll have to go look at it, I, I don't recall, I recall meeting it.
Pretty long.
But in regards to the House Department, the Health Department governs wells and seppics within the area, so if there are concerns about those issues, she would go through and, and look at those, along with, like with me, I'm the one that's familiar with the manganese because it happened on a lot that I was involved with at the time, and I'll discuss that further with her.
I got all.
She's the one that's very experienced.
Help sent me all the stuff for the two properties to the south of us, for the wells, or something, so. You know, so that's, I got all that from them.
Good.
Would you like to continue with your questions?
Well, I, um, I did forward an email with specifically all those questions, though I'm not familiar with how this works. How, uh, will all this be?
I'll look at it in your letter, I'll look at it on Google Drive.
I have March eleventh, I have January twenty-sixth, I have January twenty-eighth. And, oh, also on traffic, um, is it, uh, normal to have it just one day, um, done for the?
Boring. Typically, they do come out, uh, one day, in, in my experience, and, and so that, so there's a good entire day in traffic, is there a specific day that you're concerned about?
No, I'm just wondering, because it's just one day, it didn't look like it was enough to do a traffic study, that's all.
Okay. Um, can you please, before the next meeting, make sure we review the questions and comments?
Yeah.
Um, we'll also do that too, and make sure that those are addressed.
And this was from fifty-eight Taylor?
Yes.
I'm sorry, I'm more good, I'm better with addresses than with names. I'll check the address back soon, too.
Okay. Anyone else? Okay, uh, so we will look for the continuation, uh, request from, or, uh, uh, from Attorney Marcus for ML.
Thirty-five days.
Thirty-five day extension, um, and we'll, we did public hearings, we have a date that we.
No, we'll go, we'll go meeting by meeting at this point.
Okay. And next, okay, this meeting will continue for April eighth, uh, twenty twenty-five.
Could you turn off your screen now, Attorney Marcus?
I don't have to watch you guys anymore, you're okay on your own?
You can watch the map.
I don't want to look over his window and alphabet, alphabetize.
And it's still light here, too.
Yes, it's still light there.
Still light, it, it's sunny, it's unbelievable, I mean, of course.
All right. Come on, you know.
But I'll be back on Monday, I'll get you a letter, and if, if, if we forget it, just send us a reminder.
Thank you.
Thank you for your time, thank you.
Just, I mean, I'm a little short of words since I'm representing Tony there, when will you set that in?
Four twenty-two.
Four twenty-two, okay, you're just accepting it. Okay, and I'm going to depart, thank you.
Good night.
Thank you for me too.
Uh, all right, we will, so, we'll move into our business meeting, and I will seek Doug for school grading.
Okay.
And everyone had a chance to review the minutes for our meeting on the eleventh. The regular meeting we had on the eleventh.
Yeah.
Have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
The extensions. Motion passes. Uh, before I ask about the special. Uh. You guys all set back there?
Yeah.
Good. All right, thank you. Um, there was a change to the minutes um for the special meeting on the eighteenth. Uh, the, we have the, everyone has those?
No, I'm handing, passing them out now, just give me one sec.
Are they on live or uh?
No, they're not, unfortunately.
I'll just go over this with everyone, we want to see some confusion, um. I believe in the way the motion was, was recorded. Um, I have reached out to our Lanier's attorney, um, Chuck Anders, did I say that right?
Andress.
Andress?
Andress.
Andress. Yeah, I, yeah, me too, anyways, I'm sorry, um. To clarify, he was able to re-watch the video. Uh, and made it clear that we had uh clarified on Tuesday, this past Tuesday, at the special meeting. That the motion um was to direct staff to prepare an amendment to the T O D overlay zone district map. Based on the map prepared by Eric Swenson, Director of Public Works, as presented at the commission's special meeting. And as it, as it reads, um. So I would uh let this make sure everyone is clear on that. That there was no change actually made um on this past Tuesday. And we are asking staff to repair the amendment um for the T O D overlay zone. Based on that map. Uh, I have also reached out uh in my conversation with Chuck, uh, the attorney. Uh, he is going to rate that up for us, um, just take some pressure off of our staff. So, as a, I'll make a motion to approve the amended minutes. For the special meeting from March eighteenth, twenty twenty-five.
Second.
All in favor, uh, all in favor?
Aye.
All right. Any opposed? Any extensions? Motion passes. Thank you, all right, uh, we have uh many invoices.
Yeah.
Excellent. New business, we have upstream properties to LLC, forty-eight Sponey Hill Road, amended site plan. Uh, so the application is received, uh, we'll review it at our meeting on April eleventh. Um, and I asked staff to send out a letter to the adjoining properties. Uh, which is mostly.
Two Copper Square.
Oh, the Copper Square.
Yes.
Properties, the adjoining properties for that building.
For the rear portion.
The rear portion that we're talking about.
As it.
Making the change to that building.
Considerate of the existing.
So, we're gonna send the letter to them, uh, it is not a public hearing, so to speak. Um, but we're gonna invite those immediate people that it affects immediately to come in and, and voice their opinion. If uh, if they'd like, and we're gonna schedule that for April eleventh.
Yes, uh, April eighth.
Yeah.
Is it the eighth?
Eighth, yeah, that's the next one.
Oh, I'm sorry. Did I say?
He said eleven. I said eleven, too.
I did, it's my mistake, I apologize.
My mistake.
Next new business, One Noah Drive LLC. It's an eight thirty G proposal for six two bedroom units. Um, public hearing is gonna be set for April twenty-second.
Correct.
Uh, and that's for seventy-two reservoir. Any questions on that? Um, and do, once again, I know this is common, just so you guys all know. Uh, I have a very close personal tie to the owner and I will be recusing myself from that. Um, just that I don't have any opportunity to show favoritism or re-reflection, so. Um, we'll move on to the planner's board.
Uh, excuse me, could you make a motion to accept the application?
Oh, I'm sorry.
And refer it to the appropriate departments for review?
Uh, I'll make, uh, I can't make that.
All right, I'll make a motion to accept One Noah Drive LLC seventy-two Reservoir Road. And refer to all uh appropriate departments within town hall.
Sorry. All in favor?
Aye.
Nylemstein.
Opposed.
Excellent, uh, planner's report?
Um, I don't know if I said this last meeting or not, but I can't remember, I'll say it one more time. David and I are working on the updating the zoning map. With S O R consultants, that's the zoning map that hasn't been updated for ten years.
Excellent.
Amongst many other things. I, I will also just say that staff is, um, it's, it's a little difficult because I'm not working a full week. And please take that into consideration of things running a little late.
Excellent, thank you. Any commission comments on the start with Mr. Legnard?
Oh, good. Oh, good, we're good.
Perfect. Kenny, anything on that?
No.
I have a couple of things, um.
Well, one cleanup, I'm sorry, and I'm sorry for, uh, I'm gonna see Eric, we're kidding.
Oh, okay.
All right, I apologize, I did not say that.
Okay, thanks. Um, yeah, a couple, a couple of things. One, uh, you know, we got uh some information from uh first selectmen before our meeting today, which I think is helpful. I think that um the process in which we're informed of Mr. Swenson's role, to me, is troubling. I think that the uh giving that information after the fact is great. I think that it kind of lets us feel like he was operating in a capacity that overall is, is okay and, and above board and, and, and that's fine. Um, however, I think that we made some decisions as a, as a commission based on information when that clarity didn't exist. So I just want to kind of throw that out there. Um, also, just a, a question. Um. Any ex officio member, are they, are they subject to the same kind of ethics for recusal that, that we are?
I will defer that and ask counsel. Um, I'd be more than happy to ask Lanier's counsel in regards to that, or no, ethics in, in, say that again.
So, so. Sure.
I understand exactly what you're asking, I have a call with Chuck tomorrow or the next day and I'll ask him.
Okay.
If that's.
Yeah, and I just, just, just so I kind of understand and, and I'll, I'll clarify for you, Beth, so you know what I'm asking. If, if there was um something that, that um, a project, a development zone, whatever it might be, that was, uh, that. That you were, that you personally, you, you lived close enough to be affected by it. Would that be grounds for you to, okay, right, so, and you would think that any member of this commission would do the same thing?
But an ex officio would also.
Would they?
No, they would also recuse.
Okay.
But I would. Go ahead, you know what I'm saying? Ethics are ethics, whether you're an ex officio member or an elected official. And in regards to that question as far as ethics, and me as a town employee, ethics are ethics. And that question, if you have a question in regards to that, um, Paul, I would ask Melanie. She's our town council.
All right.
All right.
Yeah, thank you, just some clarity would be helpful. Um, I think that um, I, I just sat in um. In the, in the gallery, in the audience, as you talked about a, a previous plan. And I just want to kind of point it out to members on the commission, at no point did anybody talk about, and, and actually, all night long. Nobody up here has said the word density, that's not been a concern tonight one time, and I just want to kind of make that.
A general statement?
Just a general, just a general statement. Um. And, and lastly, I, this is, it, it, it has been, you're gonna find this about me, things that. I sometimes latch on to little things and have a tough time letting it go. Uh, at our meeting last week, I, I feel like I've spent the last seven days um feeling a, a little bit unsettled. Because I feel like uh we as, as a, as a commission maybe did not live up to a standard that I think we should hold ourselves to. I think that the, the way we comport ourselves um is really important. I think that we all bring our own personal views into this volunteer work. Uh, but when we're up here, we owe it to the constituents, to the staff, to listen, to take information in and do that objectively. Um, and I think when we fall short of that, it actually sets a precedent for a lack of communication. Um, and, and that feels very troubling. Um, when I think we uh put staff in a position to feel belittled when they're giving us information that is uh meant to be helpful. Um, and also when we allow members of the public to make comments to the board, to staff. Um, without any repercussions, that to me is troubling. I think decorum matters, I think what we do matters, and I think we fell short of that, we fell, that's it, thank you.
Um, yeah, I'm just gonna echo the last part of what Eric said there, not being here last week and just re-watching the video. Um, I, I agree with what he just said.
Um, when I, we went, when we went on our site walk for the two different properties. Um, we did not have any, any property lines and we asked Beth whether that's applicable. Or, I think Jeff asked. Um, so I'm wondering whether we can require that when we have a site walk, that we have property lines and, you know, where the buildings are gonna be um defined. Because I, I've been on site walks also um before being on the board and on the board and, and it's not always clear. Where the property line is and where the buildings are, I think it, you know, would be helpful for us to have that information.
We've done that in the past, haven't we, Beth?
At the direction of the commission, you'll see one of the most, um, uh. The one that has always asked for that is Kitty Grant. Kitty Grant is always very specific of what she would like staked in the field. And the surveyor has done it, so going forward, if you have something you want staked in the field. I would suggest that you tell the applicant to have it done. Kitty did it, has done it a lot.
Put it into, I mean, I don't know.
No.
You have to ask each time.
No, you should ask, what do you want to see staked in the field?
Yeah, cause it could be different, it could be different every time, and to have them. Uh.
Property lines are one thing.
Right.
You know, we could always have to stake the property lines, I think that was something that Jeff had discussed, you know, in, in his field, in, in New York, that's what they do.
Right. And it wasn't real expensive to do it, so.
Depends on.
I've seen his bills, they're pretty expensive.
What I'm saying is, if you look at a plan, you want something staked in the field, shoot staff at it, you know, hey, I can't figure this out. Show me where the driveway is, stake out the driveway, stake out the building. It's your prerogative to help you in order to make a decision.
Good to know, Mo, but.
Yes.
It's good to know Kitty set precedent there.
Oh my gosh, for years, twenty years, sometimes it was.
We, we also had just three of us there and Beth, so a lot of the people did not see the two properties. That we're gonna be making decisions on, so I had taken pictures on there, but I, I think it would be helpful. In doing the thing on Saturday where, you know, we learned about the law or whatever with the municipalities. Um, they do recommend that we video tape uh site walk. So that people can see. Um, so I mean, I, I didn't do that, but I did take pictures, so I, I sent them.
Thank you.
To Beth on the two properties in case anybody wants to take a look, what people look at. I'm description under and I think it was, you know, to do that, so.
I couldn't.
If anybody has questions, I can.
Someone under thirty can do it, under forty.
Uh, the only thing I bring up is uh when speaking to counsel about an ex officio member recusing themselves, I think it's important to mention a layer of that. The person we're talking about is our subject matter expert. So, it's, it's not quite as simple as, oh, just recuse yourself because of this, uh, this person's. He's the expert in this area.
Yeah, but experts, experts recuse themselves though too, I, I understand your logic regarding this, but there are times. Say, I, I'm the planning, direct, I'm the planner director of lighting and zoning official and things like that. There are certain times that I've had to recuse myself in my career. Um, and most of those times, it is, it, it's, it's just because it's inappropriate. And that's my decision to make, to recuse, you know.
But we wouldn't have had.
I, 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 I mean, I'll give you an example, I, I have no problem with this now, but um, in regards to my husband, my husband's a plumber. When I sat on the planning and zoning commission, any, or an equity contractor, if I knew there was an opportunity for my husband to get the job, I recused. Working in town hall, my husband became a plumber. When I knew that a friend, a, a, so, a developer, not a developer, a builder, small time builders, I'm really putting myself out here now. Um, would be doing the job, I didn't even ask, I said, if I knew there was an opportunity that my husband may do it, I recused myself. And there's a letter on the file saying that there are times during my course of employment or whatever. That um I may have to recuse myself due to personal. And that's my, you know, it's not me making the money, but my husband's making the money. Is that helpful?
Yeah, no, I, I think it is, and I, and I don't think this is a comment to, to Doug, but I do think it's really important for us. To remember how we got to a point where we were getting the information about, like, from Mr. Swenson, right? My, my recollection is that the first conversation about. Uh, his willingness to share the information happened at that community forum that we had in the, in the gym, right? And he got up and presented and said, hey, I happen to know about this stuff, I'd be happy to speak with you about it. So I, I think that the process through which we went about getting that information was not us seeking it out for ourselves, but rather it was offered to us. From Mr. Swenson, so I, that, that matters to me a little bit, I think that when you kind of couple that with. Um, you know, his, his obligations to be transparent about, um, which I think we asked about several times, right? And I'm not sure we ever got a great answer. Um, I think that's important, so, anyway.
Do you wish he didn't say anything at all?
Um, no, I, I don't, I don't think, I don't wish anything, I just wish that things were above board, I think we asked him questions. I don't think we ever got a straight answer about what capacity he was operating in. And that, to me, matters, right, we have systems in place for those exact reasons. But at, the, the information is the information, I, I, I'm not judging whether or not it's biased, but I'm not sure he's the person presented, given his proximity, literally.
I'm sorry, I was writing this down.
Clarify it too, you, we had asked him, he didn't come saying, I'll come do a presentation.
No, he did stand up and say, he offered to do it.
Right, but then we had to decide to invite him.
He has to come in and.
We have to look back at that meeting.
All right, um. I, I will just say um to Eric, I just want to make sure they were clear that the only decision we made last week was to. Hold a public hearing on a proposed change. And nothing is set in stone, it's, it's gonna be, we're gonna have a public hearing, a work session. Like, nothing is, is set in stone, there's no changes right now that have been made, it's just a proposal, a starting point, if you will.
Hey, can I comment to that?
Sure, I just want, no, I. Because you had said we took action and we didn't, the only action we took was to ask staff to.
Yeah.
To write a proposal.
Right, I, I, I guess I just feel like procedure matters and it felt like, I just want to make sure we're doing things right, what?
And I agree, I agree with you a hundred percent.
Maybe out of line with that.
That's why I contacted our, our attorney this week, uh, I've had a conversation with Beth today, just to make sure we're, we're above board.
Right on.
So, I, I agree with you.
Can I just say one thing?
Sure.
I appreciate the comments in regards to um staff, Eric. Um, and, and way, and the way some of the occurrences that occurred. I, I truly do appreciate it and I think we would appreciate it and so does man, thank you very much. All about the staff and the public.
Awesome.
Yes.
Okay, uh, public input, anyone here in the room have anything?
Paul?
Paul? Yes.
Oh, I. I have one more thing to say.
Ask them first. Yeah, go ahead, Mr. Legnard.
I, I agree with Eric, when, when he made his comments about how we have to treat people in the public. Staff and each other, and I think that's important. And I think that's important. I, I like to treat people what people treat me, but I like to be treated well, uh, as, as well. And we, we weren't doing that the other night. We would, I, I, I sit and listen to all the time the stuff that I've heard before. But I have respect to the people who made the statements and I listen to them. And I listen to them, this may be something I missed the first time around. So, I mean, we have to, like, like, like he said, decorum is important within the confines of our meetings. It's important that we respect everybody, ourselves and respect the public and respect the staff. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Legnard. Uh, any s, public comment? Anyone online?
Betty Liberty has her hand raised.
All right. BJ, you have the floor.
Okay, um, in regards to the meeting last week, um, I would say it was not the meeting that I was expecting to see. And I, I certainly appreciate the review of all the progress that had been made. But I guess I was expecting as a member of the public who did observe decorum, um, that there would be more of a discussion of all the input from that October meeting. And that maybe some committees would be made or, you know, to investigate individual aspects of, of what was talked about. And I think some of it, some of the suggestions that were made also were relevant to the P O C D with, you know, commissions other than the planning and zoning. So I guess I was, I was hoping for a more, uh, specific um, reflection of the meeting from October.
Thanks, BJ. Is anyone else?
I'm sorry, can I see?
Sure, come on right up.
Hi, um, Pat Airport, fifty Worcester Street. Um, I wasn't planning on talking today. Um, Erica, I want to thank you for bringing up the comment about last meeting. Um, I've been in belt my life fifty-seven years now, live on the east side of the track. I've never heard a call that before. And I live on the west side of the track. I've been on commissions now for thirty-five years. That was the worst meeting I've ever seen. You know, I attend meetings all the time. I sit in the back. I think this is like the, I don't know, maybe third time I've spoken at one. When, when people are giving information and told to basically stop giving that information, especially when the resources are there, that's what they're supposed to do, was shocking to me. With the way the public was act, acting, at the same time, it's shocking as well. I was sitting back there and I could not pay attention to half the stuff that was going on. You know, it was a lot of disrespect going on. But I will say I feel a lot better now that you recognize it as well, you know? Beth and Dave, I've worked with them for years. They're outstanding. The commissions that I'm on, we could not do without the town support, the knowledge. I understand, you know, comments were made, you know, we're volunteered, we don't want to be here all night. We're here all night. If you have to be here all night, you're here all night. Absolutely. I've heard, you know, people in the audience, oh, we'll vote you out. You know what? Guess what? Vote, vote us out. Run for a commission. I'd love to see more people on commissions, but just want to say thank you for bringing that up. You know, I think the town, you know, needs to apologize to some people the way they were treated. I, I was just totally shocked last week, the last week's meeting, how, how it went from the board side as well as the town side. So thank you for recognizing that. Thank you.
Take that. Anyone else? Anyone online? Hearing none, make a motion to close.
Thank you.
All favors?
Aye.